Let us pray. Dear Lord Jesus, thank you for a beautiful day that you've given us today. Thank you for each of these servants' hearts tonight, Lord. May you bless each and every one of them along with our community. Thank you for grace and your mercy and forgiveness, Father God. We love you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, let's have the roll call with Clerk Simmons.
Benel?
Present.
Gantz?
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Here.
Marion?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Trig?
Yes.
Witcher?
All right. Let the record show we have a quorum. We'll begin with tonight's agenda, but before we do, we need to have a vote to approve the agenda as presented tonight.
Mayor, I'd like to make an emotion to amend the agenda to go into closed session to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, all right. We'll, if that's approved, we'll put that down here at the end of new business, but there's been a motion made for us to adjust the agenda to go into a closed session later in the meeting for a personnel item. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, there's a second by Councilman Witcher, okay? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We'll put that at the, is it, at the end of the agenda, okay? Okay, all right, very good. All right, so the agenda is approved as amended. Now let's talk about the minutes. You all have had these in possession for a while, and hopefully you've had a chance to look over them. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda from the la, the, rather, the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion, Benel.
Second by Lowry.
Okay, all right. Any discussion of that approval? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Okay, a motion carries. Next thing we're going to do is, we are going to ask the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Glasgow to come forward to the podium. There's been a whole lot of activity going on with the parks and a lot of folks who kind of want to know where we are, and so we thought it would be really good to have Eddie speak to the things going on with the park as we hopefully get closer to spring and a lot of activity at the park. Eddie?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to talk about some of the things that we have going on right now. I know there's a lot of information out there, and sometimes people don't know what we're doing, so I figured it'd best if you heard it from me. So on programming, we have several programs taking place right now. We have open gym pickleball, which is a huge program for us, fairly new, but it's been growing a lot. We have that Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then also Tuesday nights. Our video ball program, we have 11 teams in our two different divisions. Our adult volleyball league has five teams that are playing on Thursday nights. Cornhole league on Monday nights has eight teams. Our youth soccer signups will begin the end of this month. And then my team of 11, which includes myself, we're just doing everything we can to maintain the facilities that we have and run the programs that we have. Now, as far as facility stuff that we have going on, we have three different park bathrooms that are being built as we speak. As of last week, all the footers were poured, and they are coming back this week to continue on that project. At Weldon Park and at Beaver Creek Park, we have our security cameras are in. They are all installed with the exception of two at Beaver Trail and one over at Weldon Park. They're coming back in the next week or so to finish that project. Once that is 100% done, we're going to put it out there for everybody to see, kind of show you how it works and whatnot, but they're up and running. They have been running for about a week and a half or so, and they, they do great for us so far, so I'm really, really happy that we have those. A couple other things we have going on. Beaver Creek Park this spring is going to be very, very busy. We have a 180-some thousand dollar playground that should be here at the end of this week, if not the end of this week, the first of next week, and then that will be installed shortly thereafter. Our walking trail is going to be widened four feet around, all the way around the loop out there at Beaver Creek. We have a 40 by 32 shelter that will be put in sometime in the spring. And then we also have some renovations taking place, not really renovations, but we have some, a project taking place at Richardson Stadium where the fire caused the, caused it to burn down. This week, they are working on repairing the backstop and then also installing the new fencing for that. We have a meeting with the electrical, people that are bidding on the electrical work for the lights. That's going to take place Friday, and we'll open those bids next Friday. And then we are still in the process of the design phase, if you will, for the stadium part, and I think the mayor's going to, might have something to say on that. I know you spoke with Mr. Mullenkamp today. I'll let you speak real quick.
Well, obviously, part of the discussion is the relationship between the city and the school with respect to Richardson Field, and tonight, at the exact same meeting time that we're meeting, the school board is meeting, and Dr. Mullenkamp assured me that that is on their agenda to talk about the relationship between the city and the school board with respect to engagement for Richardson Field. Maybe we'll know something before the evening's over with.
Gotcha. And just so everybody out there knows, the timeline that we have in place right now should fit with what the schools have when they start playing baseball games. With the electrical people that I've met with, even with our delay in having to bid everything out this week, there should still fit in that schedule, or they're up and operational before March 18th. I'm not going with it. So that's what they're telling me, and that's where we hope to be. As far as other things that we have going on, the mayor and I, we spoke at the last parks meeting. We have signed an agreement with Branstad or Carroll to help with the master plan for American Legion Park, and that is to help with the design of the park and the new aquatics facility that we're looking at building. We're not renovating the old pool. It's way past its lifetime, so we are looking at a new design and layout for American Legion Park. Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else you want to add there, Eddie?
I think that's it. I mean, that pretty much covers everything that we have going on out there. I know it's a lot. There's about 12 big projects if you kind of split them up.
Eddie, do you care to explain all the information that Branstad or Carroll will provide to us in terms of the new pool and other things at American Legion?
Yeah, basically, of course, they're an architectural firm, so they will help us with the actual design of the park, of the aquatics facility, whatever, whatever else we decide to put in the park. They will help us with the layout to see if a pool fits better in one spot versus another, if, say, we do tennis courts, if they should be better suited in this location versus that location. They take into account all the regulations and guidelines that we have to follow, and then we will have some public meetings as well, and they will also take our information from the master plan that we have done and compile all that and help us design the park. Does that answer that? Pretty good.
Mr. Furlong, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For Branstad to come in to do that, what is the charge for their services?
It's $20,000 for that contract. Originally, it was $30,000 sometime last year. We talked it down to $25,000, and then over the last two months or so, I went back to them and told them some of the things that we were going to do, and they dropped it down to $20,000.
Anybody else have questions for Eddie Furlong? It's a very, very busy place up there. You know, it's, it's the right time of year for it to be happening, but with the decision to plow forward with the pool, to move forward with getting the Richardson Field back in, in shape, and I'm more excited about these cameras from the standpoint of security and from the standpoint of dealing head-on with the vandalism that we have had, and the resolution on these cameras. If you hadn't seen the resolution on these cameras, you can, you can count the wrinkles on some of these people's faces that are out there at the park that are close enough to the cameras where they might be vandalizing something, so I really, really feel good about that, Eddie.
I agree. One thing I didn't say, so with the city pool, the current city pool, it is fully operational. It will be fully operational this summer. Our hopes is that we do this master plan for American Legion and that we have something ready to go when the pool shuts down at the end of the summer. So hopefully, we run through the summer with our current pool. The end of the summer, we can have a shovel on the ground, hopefully, fingers crossed, and we'll see what happens from there.
We've actually theorized being able to post a big sign out there this year at the pool saying, "Coming in the summer of 2024," and have the really nice drawing of the entire complex to kind of get people excited about it because it'll be something that is real and something that is going to happen, and I think that's the way to handle it. Thank you. Lot of, lot of good work going on right there, and he's got, I think he has like 13 people on staff that are going to help you keep-
Eric, there's 11 of us.
11 of them?
If we were fully staffed. We're currently down two positions right now.
Okay, all right, so lots to do.
Yep.
All right, very good. No further questions, I'll let you have a seat then, Eddie. Thank you very much. Good to- Okay, we have some old business to deal with. Rich, you want to bring us up to date here on a couple of ordinances that we need to get second reading on?
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance amending the Glasgow zoning ordinance, rezoning property located at 302 South Morgan Street and 400 and 402 East Wayne Street, consisting of .77 acres, more or less, in Glasgow from B2 to an R3 classification. K&amp;M Services LLC is the owner and applicant, and I'm reading from a summary here, of the .77 acre lot at the corner of South Morgan and East Wayne Streets. The current zoning is B2, which is a general business classification, and the request is for it to be R3, which is a small lot, medium-density residential classification. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends that the zoning change occur, and that was after a trial-type due process hearing on December the 19th of last year. This ordinance does implement that zoning change, and it requires that future development must still comply with the overall development plan ordinance. It takes effect upon passage and publication according to law.
This, of course, is second reading, and at the first reading, we had Tom Kendall from the Planning and Zoning Office here to explain what this is. If anybody, I don't think I could recall everything that he said, but did you all understand what he did on the first presentation of that? So with this being an ordinance and a second reading, we need to do this in the form of a roll call vote for this ordinance. So first of all, let me, well, we're doing a second reading, so we can just go ahead and have the roll call vote.
Trig?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Gantz? Benel?
Yes.
Witcher?
Here.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item, Mayor, is a municipal order appointing Terrell Alexander, reappointing him to serve as member of the Fort Williams Restoration Commission. This appointment shall be for a four-year term expiring February 9 of 2027, adopted today, is dated by the Glasgow City Council.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this municipal order appointing Terrell Alexander to the Fort Williams Restoration Committee.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Second by Neal. All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, Mayor, is new business, the first reading of an ordinance enacting and adopting supplement 2023 S-54 to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Glasgow. And I'm, again, I'll be reading from a summary. The city contracts with a company to codify and index all of its legislative action. That company is called American Legal Publishing Corporation. From time to time, the code of ordinances needs updated, and the publishing company requests that an ordinance be adopted supplementing the code since the last supplement. This ordinance adopts supplement 2023 S-54. It is a housekeeping-type ordinance to keep our code up to date. This particular supplement covers legislative action since the last supplement on September 12, 2022, and it takes effect upon publication and passage and publication according to law.
Okay, you've heard the first reading of this ordinance. I'll entertain a motion that we approve it on first read.
Motion, Benel.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, is there any discussion? And I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Lowry?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes, ma'am.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trig?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Gantz is absent. Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the motion carries.
The next item is an ordinance amending ordinance 2022-3012, the city's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. This ordinance amends the budget and authorizes, authorizes the following transfers from the unappropriated general fund. $14,000 to the fire department accounts for two truck repairs and a heat unit, a total of $55,000 for fuel, $15,000 to the street department, $6,000 to the fire department, $1,800 to animal control, $33,000 to the police department, $12,700 to the police department for seizure and restoration, restitution activity, $41,500 to the street department for two truck repairs, $49,850 to the cultural center for repairs and replacement to heating units and roofing, $862,604 to the administrative sale of property, for the sale of various properties, including the West Main property, the Chamber Tourism Building, and code enforcement properties, $41,600 to the street department for sale of property, $7,500 to the Parks and Recreation Department for the sale of property, $246,768 to the Parks and Recreation for an insurance check for Goran Park, which will then be transferred further into the Parks and Recreation Contractual Improvement Account for repairs and replacement of Richardson Field, $7,800 to the street department for bid overage on a street sweeper, a total of $63,200 for fuel, of which $8,200 goes to the sanitation department, $55,000 to the landfill, $10,500 to the sanitation department for repairs to a one-arm garbage truck, $16,050 to sanitation department for sale of property, and $19,000 to the landfill for sale of property. This ordinance takes effect upon passage and publication according to law.
All right, so there's a number of items addressed, and you all have had this in your packet, the budget amendment, but I ask our city treasurer, Ms. Stephanie Garrett, to be here. Stephanie, stand up there so everybody knows who you are. If there's something that you saw when you all reviewed this, when you first got your packet, that you might want to ask about this, this is, this just has to happen, we budget, and then we go through the year, and there's things that have to be added or whatever, so we do that by an ordinance, but Stephanie understands every penny that's on there if you have any question about that.
Mayor, I would just ask Stephanie to, to address us. You know, we're looking now six months, almost seven months into the fiscal year. Looks like expenditures of about $250,000 that we did not have budgeted. Talk to us about moving forward for the second half of the fiscal year.
Everybody knows how our economy's going, so fuel has been up, down, up, down, and we are going to have to have more money to reach us to the end of the year, and this is estimate of what we think will get us to the end of the year for our fuel. We've had some trucks to tear up, we had a dump truck to tear up, we had a ladder truck to tear up, we've had an engine to tear up, we've had a bucket truck to tear up, and spent several thousand dollars. Of course, we did not anticipate any of that happening. And we have also had some items that we have sold out of different departments to try to make up some money for this. We purchased a street sweeper, and that bid went over. That's, that's in this also, to what we had planned for, but we sold that street sweeper also. That is some of your revenue there in the street department. We also sold some salt spreaders and some miscellaneous small equipment at our Parks and Rec- Eddie's cleaned up in the back of his, some of his shops and stuff, and they've sold several small things, so that's what that is. They've sold vans, windows, trailer, a groomer, playground equipment, old city bus, just numerous, numerous things. The landfill sold an old grinder. Sanitation sold some small, old equipment, but that, that's what we've done to try to make up for some of the money. And then, of course, we had the fire, and we had the insurance check that came in, and we have those expenses as well that we may even have more money to have to put in later in the year before we get to. But this is, this is how, this is how we're going. We're really, we're doing well. We are doing, I guess you would say, except for the things that have gone up or things that have tore up, we're on schedule.
The field for the rest of the year, the 200, roughly, $250,000, I'm rounding on that sum, but you feel that's enough to get us through to June 30th?
Unless something else tears up, you know?
Right.
Yeah, we dropped the transmission out of a vehicle just recently. That's, part of that is in here. We're hoping by the time it's done that this still will help cover it. Pretty positive that it will.
But we have other budget items that we're moving forward on, though?
We are.
Before, all right?
We are.
And those are moving?
Those are good.
Okay.
Just anything unexpected would be the only thing that I see, you know, coming up. It's just something you don't, never know.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, Stephanie's here, and she's got all the answers. If you were looking at all these things, are there any other questions about the need to have these, this budget amendment and things that we're dealing with? We can ask her now. If there's no further questions for Stephanie, then I'll entertain a motion that we pass the first reading of this ordinance.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second by Witcher.
All right, if we had, if we have any further discussion other than what we got from Stephanie, from anybody here on the council? All right, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Marion?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trig?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Benel?
Yes.
Gantz? Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously, and we'll have a second reading of this budget amendment in two weeks. Rich?
Next item is a resolution authorizing the City of Glasgow to dispose of surplus equipment pursuant to law that the Administrative Department has designated as surplus. Be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, the City of Glasgow Administrative Department has, has several items that has been designated as surplus that needs to be disposed of. They are internet Wi-Fi type equipment specified there in the resolution. Section 2, pursuant to KRS 82083, sub-paragraph 4H, the items listed above will be sold for scrap or disposed of as garbage in a manner consistent with the public interest if the property has no value or is of nominal value as determined by an independent appraisal. Be it further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the disposal of these items pursuant to law.
Okay, you've heard the resolution that we dispose of some things that we don't need. I'll entertain a motion that we pass the resolution. By Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there any discussion about this resolution? If not, then I'll ask all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign, and the motion carries. The, the resolution passes.
Next item is another resolution regarding surplus equipment, this time with respect to the Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department. Section 1, the City of Glasgow Parks and Recreation Department has several items that have been designated as surplus, and there is a desire to dispose of those. Those items are listed on Exhibit A. Section 2, pursuant to law, KRS 82083, sub-paragraph 4D, these surplus items will be sold by electronic auction following publication of the auction, including the uniform resource link for the site of the electronic auction according to law. It is further resolved that the City of Glasgow, Mayor Royce, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute those documents necessary to complete the disposal of the items pursuant to law.
Okay, you have heard the reading of the resolution. Is there anybody who would like to make a motion that we approve it?
Motion, Benel.
Is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, resolution carries.
Next item is a resolution relating to the road improvements to 1297. That whereas there exists a soccer association, which is an independent district authorized and founded through an interlocal agreement by and between the City of Glasgow, the Barren County School District, and the Glasgow Independent School System and Barren County, whereas the soccer association owns land adjacent to Highway 1297 in Barren County, which, on which is situated a soccer complex. Whereas as part of the proposed improvements to Highway 1297, the Commonwealth of Kentucky seeks to acquire for the purchase price of $66,800 a portion of the soccer association's land fronting Highway 1297, that being designated as parcel 11 on the attached plansheets, Exhibit A. Whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky has prepared a proposed deed for the transaction, a specimen copy of which is attached as Exhibit B. And whereas on May 19 of li, of last year, the soccer association adopted a resolution approving the aforementioned transaction with the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and now each interlocal amendment, agreement member is being asked to ratify and authorize the transaction described herein. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow as follows. One, the City of Glasgow ratifies and authorizes the action taken by the soccer association in its May 19, 2022 resolution, that being the conveyance by the soccer association of parcel 11 as described herein for the purchase price of $66,800 as part of road improvements along Highway 1297. Paragraph 2, the City of Glasgow further approves and directs that the Barren County Judge Executive, as Chair of the soccer association, be authorized to execute and deliver a deed of conveyance to the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the use and benefit of the Transportation Cabinet, Department of Highways, and to act as its authorized agent in certifying that the consideration reflected in the deed is the full consideration paid and accepts said consideration.
You have had the full explanation by Mr. Alexander about what we're doing right here, conveying part of this property out of the soccer complex, and first of all, entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion, Norris.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Benel.
Okay, so now we can have discussion. Does anybody have questions about what we're doing?
I would ask, Rich, and maybe I'm just missing the number, but in the resolution, we talk about $66,800, and then the deed of conveyance, it's $67,100?
Yeah.
But that's just a-
I think that was the original version of that deed, but it, that $66,800 is the proper consideration. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further discussion about this particular resolution? If not, then I'll entertain, well, actually, we'll have a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution carries.
Next item is a resolution authorizing the filing of a grant, and I'll read from a summary of that resolution. This resolution authorizes Mayor Royce to file an application with the Department of Transportation, United States of America, for a grant under the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and to take any and all other necessary ancillary action, including executing all required documents to support the application, furnishing additional information to the U.S. Department of Transportation as may be required through that application process, and to execute grant contract agreements with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for aid in financing of the operating assistance projects. This resolution further gives assurance that the legislative body intends to continue the operation of its transit service or planning the transit service for a minimum of five years, and the- years, and the legislative body will commit its local share of funds necessary to support the project to improve the transit service in the city's service area for that minimum five-year period from the inception of the project, and that the local share of expenses are to be resolved from the city's budget.
Okay, you have heard the reading of the resolution. I'll entertain a motion that we approve the resolution.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Neil, is there any question or discussion about this particular resolution?
Mayor, I would just ask, with, as far as our commitment on this for the next five years, can we get an update either tonight or sometime, I'd like to get tonight, about where we stand with our involvement, continual, you know, transit authority working, the bus running, usage of it?
All right. Well, I can tell you about that, but April Russell is here, and she is the person who lives in that world, so I'm gonna ask her to step up to the microphone.
But as we move forward, I mean, tonight, I mean, we're being asked again to enter into a five-year term with this, so is this a good move for us? Are we seeing increased usage? Are we, where are we gonna be at in five years?
Sure, so after, after COVID, we've gone back to our full schedule. We run full days from, we start at 7:00, and then that runs till 6:30 at night. Recently, we just decided this year we're gonna do four extra holidays, because even though the, we're closed on the holiday, the doctor's offices aren't always closed on the holidays, some of those, so like President's Day, things like that, it would be beneficial to, to the riders to have that. We have seen increased usage, particularly this winter. Things are moving along well, and it's a great service to the citizens.
Have we looked at any expanded routes or moving away from existing routes?
We did look at an expanded route, and right before we kind of shut everything down, we, we went to two buses, and that, it worked, but it wasn't necessary, and it just was an increased stress on employees and things to that nature. So we've gone just back to the simple one route a day. It works well. Of course, it's a fixed deviated route, so we'll go off about three-quarters of a mile if somebody calls in and needs that. We have taken some of the stops away, and those are, if they call in, they're still on the list that says call in, and they can call in. If we didn't, you know, we take, watch how many people get on at each stop, things to that nature, and if we didn't have that many people that year or things like that, we have backed off those stops just to get to the others. People can still call in, and we'll still come to them.
And our history with this, how many years have we been operating the transit car? I mean, it's a number of years, but how many?
I, I couldn't tell you.
Twenty-five?
Over 20 years.
Yeah.
I would have to look, I wasn't prepared to tell you that number when it started.
How about driver turnover?
Dottie, Ms. Dottie's been driving for years, as long as I've been here, Ms. Dottie's been driving the daytime. We did go there for a while, that the second shift was really hard to field because it was a part-time position, and a lot of people want to work from, you know, 2:00 to 6:00 every day, that wasn't really what they wanted to do. So we were able to work out where they work part-time for the Street Department, part-time for the Transit. That way they can have a full-time position, we have somebody to back up, help the Street Department with a few things, and then they go over to the Transit. We've got a great guy now, James Bailey, he's been here with us for a few months, and he's doing a wonderful job. We don't have any complaints.
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a great service for Glasgow, for our residents, I just want to make sure that we're utilizing, we're effective with it, and we keep it available for our citizens.
Yes. Lanice Coe is the new Transit Manager, I'm not sure that you guys have met her. We can have her come up and kind of give an update and present that and put the numbers together for you.
Yeah.
Don't mind to do that at all.
Great, appreciate that, thank you.
April, for those that maybe are watching online or on TV or listening on the radio, can you clarify what the cost of this is for, for an individual?
Sure. Right now, Darren, we're still per Transit in the COVID era. Federal transportation is a little different than everything else. During COVID, it's free, so we haven't been charging for a couple of years now. If that, if that, when that money runs out, we'll go back to 50 cents a ride.
Now, I'm really tickled that April and Lanice have worked it out to where we can have the bus running on four holidays.
You guys.
Now, I will put you on the spot, we know it's President's Day.
Martin Luther King Junior Day.
So anyway, if somebody has someplace to be on Martin Luther King Junior Holiday, our city buses are gonna be running now.
Yes, they will be willing to take you, President's Day, Juneteenth, and Veterans Day.
Okay, all right, so I think that's a great service to, to be able to offer that to everybody, too, so I appreciate all of your hard work on that.
And it's not just doctors' business, if they need to go to the grocery store or wherever, if there's an event happening on the square, they'll be available to get there. And that's an abbreviated schedule on those days, we'll run eight to four.
Right.
The bus schedule is online. Absolutely, it's online, it's at all your shelters, and if you need one mailed to you, you can call us and give us your address, and we'll mail you one.
And they're gonna be doing some extra promotion on that so that people know they can take advantage of that on those, on those holidays. Okay, good discussion. Any more discussion on this resolution? If not, then I'll ask all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Mayor, the next two, final two resolutions on the agenda relate to the back parking lot area behind City Hall. The first one is a resolution approving an easement from City of Glasgow to Gooden Properties LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute the easement. Be it hereby resolved that in order to facilitate the extension of a new sewer service to the property owned by Gooden Properties LLC located at 111 East Washington Street here in Glasgow, the easement from the City of Glasgow to Gooden Properties LLC, a copy of which is attached as Exhibit A, shall be and hereby is approved in all respects. Be it further resolved that Mayor Henry Royce shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute the aforementioned easement for and on behalf of the City of Glasgow.
All right, you've heard the resolution as it was presented by Rich. I will entertain a motion that we pass this resolution.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about this? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We have one more, Rich.
I apologize, I think I missed, I'm gonna back up here. Well, this is a, this is a resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a grant administered by the Kentucky Pride Fund Household Hazardous Waste Management. Be it hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a grant in the amount of $15,000. This is administered through the Kentucky Pride Fund Household Hazard Waste Management, which will be used, if received, for the purpose of funding the City of Glasgow hosting a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day for the residents of Barren County. This is an 80/20 in-kind matching grant, and the applicant shall provide matching funding of the total cost of the project, or $3,750 if received. The amount of the total project would then be $18,750. Be further resolved by the city that Mayor Royce is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for this grant.
Okay, we've done this before, it's an excellent grant, I'll entertain a motion that we approve at this time.
Motion, Lowry.
Okay, and I have a second as well, and any discussion about this? All right, let's vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Couple of things to talk about here, the pending appointment notification, oh, you got one more, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, I messed you up when I missed that.
I was in a hurry, go ahead.
This, this is the last one, Mayor, this is the resolution approving easements from the City of Glasgow to the Glasgow Electric Plant Board and authorizing the mayor to execute the easements. Be it hereby resolved that in order to facilitate the improvement of electric utility service in and around Glasgow City Hall and the nearby buildings, the six separate easements from the City of Glasgow to the Glasgow Electric Plant Board, copies of which are attached heretofore, shall be and hereby are approved in all respects. Be it further resolved that Mayor Royce is authorized and directed to execute the aforementioned easements for and on behalf of the City of Glasgow.
Okay, now, these two really actually went together, we threw in a little hazardous waste in between the two, but this is about what's going on in the back parking lot, and first of all, I will entertain a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion, Norris.
Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? This is all about bringing utility services to some of the work that's going on that's improving the downtown area, and they're having to come through the city parking lot there, it's gonna be underground service, there's nothing above ground, and I can say that the Electric Plant Board and the other utilities have been very good to work with in being agreeable with these easements, and it's just, it's progress, and it's working the way that it, that it should be. So, anyway...
This was charging stations.
No, the charging stations aren't gonna be back there now, Marlon. The charging stations are most likely, according to the EPB, are most likely gonna be moved over either close to behind the Water Company or close to behind or beside the Museum of the Barrens. There's more space to do it, and there's more access to like three-phase power over there. Those are the two explanations that I have gotten for that. So, but it's, the charger stations are still gonna happen just in a different place. This, this parking lot is busy enough back there and get, gonna get busier, so I'm glad that the decision was made to put those a little bit further, but still right in the downtown area. All right, so we voted on that, didn't we?
Not yet.
We did not, okay, so I got a motion and a second, and we had discussion. I don't want to cut off the discussion if there's any more questions. All right, so I'll call a question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Okay, so those motions all carry. Now, let me get over here and look at the pending appointment notification. We have to do this when we appoint people to boards, and per Resolution Number 20162344, I will give you the names of two appointment notifications, and we will, you'll have two weeks to think about this, and we'll vote on them at the next council meeting, but pending agencies, boards, commissions, and committee appointments for approval on 2/27/2023, the Code Enforcement Board, David Harrison, to fulfill unexpired term of Abby Medford, which is a three-year term that ends 08/31/2024. David Harrison is a native of Glasgow and recently retired after 27 years of service with the Glasgow Electric Plant Board. Now, the second appointment to the Electric Plant Board proposed is W. Keith Rowlett to fulfill the unexpired term of Mark Haynes, which is a four-year term which ends 7/31/2025. W. Keith Rowlett is a Glasgow resident, has been a minister of Harlow's Chapel Baptist Church for 26 years, and retired from R. Donnelly &amp; Sons after 42 years of service. Hopefully that's enough information for you all to know, and in two weeks, they will be coming up for a vote to perhaps fulfill those appointments. Okay? All right, let's talk about these executive orders right here that are in your packet, Rich, as far as the Glasgow Police Department SOP procedures. Let's make sure they have an understanding of those, okay?
Again, these, these are the two executive orders that is housekeeping in nature as far as cleaning up some of the SOPs. I know Chief Arbogast is here, but I've, I've reviewed those changes, and I don't see any glaring issues, just keeping things up to date.
Okay, all right. I believe right here is where I think Councilman Kirkpatrick's motion to amend the agenda to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of personnel, that's just amend the agenda, I need to have a motion that we do that.
Motion.
Motion by?
Mayor.
Okay, all right, is there a second to do that?
Sir.
Second by Councilman Marvin Witcher, Marlon Witcher, not your brother, you, Marlon Witcher, okay, all in favor?
And Mayor, let me say, just for, for the record, it's pursuant to KRS 61.810, subparagraph 1F, for discussions of personnel that matters.
Okay, all right, so I will call the question. All in favor of going into closed session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will come back after closed session, we will have a motion to come back into open session, we'll report whatever discussion, whatever action was taken, and then we will resume with our announcements for the meeting. Everybody understand? Okay. Benel, and a second?
Sir.
Okay, all in favor of coming out of closed session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, the closed session has ended, we're back in open session, we needed to report that no action was taken in the closed session, and with that being said, the Glasgow City Council meeting will be wrapped up with announcements about some things that you all need to know about. For example, President's Day, City Hall will be closed on Monday, the 20th. Public Works Street, Sanitation, Stormwater, and Landfield Departments will be closed Monday, the 20th. Monday's garbage and recycling will be collected on Tuesday, February 21st. Also, need to have your garbage cart and recycling bin curbside by 7:00. On President's Day, the Glasgow Transit Bus is gonna be running, an abbreviated schedule, starting at 8:15 and ending at 3:55 for folks who have somewhere to go. Next meeting is Monday, February 27th at 6:00 P.M. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Everybody, I got, that's the most I've ever had, a motion to adjourn, so I'm gonna say there's a motion and a second, and they're all in favor indicate by saying aye.
All right, we're done, thank you.